Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the
Here we go.
January 18th Board Meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here we go.
Thank you, and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Trustee Saturn?
Present.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Present.
Trustee Ingraffia?
Present.
Trustee Keenly?
Present.
Supervisor Sweeney?
Present. Okay, we have a quorum. Public comment, we have no one physically here, anybody online? Nobody? Okay, I'll move on to the consent agenda, are there any items any of the board members would like to see removed from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Saturn?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Keenly. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn?
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Stained.
Okay. Nierdowski abstained. Trustee Ingraffia?
Yes.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney?
Aye.
Hey, motion carries. Item E on the agenda, discussion and potential action on the approval of minutes. You have minutes from the December 28th regular Board Meeting. Are there any proposed changes or questions on those sets of minutes? Okay, hearing none, can I have a, I will entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Ingraffia?
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Nierdowski. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, presentations, there are none this evening. We have elected official reports. First report, Assessor, Connie?
The Board has my written report, and as I notated in that report, I had a conference call with the newly-elected Board of Review Commissioner, Tammy Went. The conversation was wide-ranging, and it lasted almost an hour. We had a very positive exchange of information. I had obviously some suggestions for her, and she let it be known that, once we were able to actually have outreach programs other than Zoom programs, that she would be happy to come out and speak to our constituents. It may be a situation that, depending upon how we proceed with COVID, that when we are open for Board of Review this year, we may still be in a Zoom situation, or it may be a situation where she does some sort of a YouTube video to introduce herself. But I found it very heartening that she was open to suggestions and seemed to, she will be getting her CIAO by the end of the year, and she has also said that she will make it a point to attend our Cook County Township Assessors meetings. That would be it.
Thank you, any questions for Connie? All right, clerk's report, George?
Yeah, there were, I don't have a written report, there were no FOIAs. I will mention that, that the clerk's office did handle the objection that was made to the, in regards to the township election. That objection process was, was closed as of last week, and, and everything was properly filed and handled there. Also coming up this Thursday, we have the lottery for the party placement on the consolidated election ballot in April, and when that's completed, then our responsibility is simply to certify the ballot, and then our responsibilities are basically done for the election. And that's all I have.
Any questions for George? Thank you, Highway Commissioner Art?
Well, you submitted a written report, and basically, nothing really going on, there's no snow.
We appreciate it, thanks for making sure there's
Concise.
And very little snow. Any questions for Art? Okay. All right, the, the only thing that I would say under my, under my report is that will be, we've been moving the ball forward on the Northside Project with the Challenge Course and Bike Safety Course. So, we've had a lengthy discussion with the contractor about what the Board decided as far as moving forward with the modified equipment that we discussed, and also, you know, the modifications to the mulch, and postponing the building of the perimeter fence to a later date. So all that was discussed, we're moving forward on the underground storage tank removal. Any demolition, that can be done now, and we'll hit the ground running in the spring, and hopefully, it looks like by early summer. There's a strong possibility that it will be complete, maybe even sooner, but I don't want to count our chickens just yet, so I'll say early summer, and, but it looks like things are right on track where they need to be, and I'll continue to report as new information as the project develops. Okay, any questions for me? All right, can I have a motion to accept the elected officials' reports?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Nierdowski?
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Keenly, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Under correspondence, we received an agency application, Connections of Illinois there. This was a, we did not, there was an oversight as far as alerting Connections of Illinois to our application process, so we wanted to provide that so that this, this agency can be considered, and we can talk about any details about how the Board would like to move forward with this agency from a presentation standpoint, but also from a budgetary standpoint. But they're asking for, this, this agency's Connections of Illinois is asking for $5,000 for their program, which serves individuals, basically helping them with last-dollar expenses for food, clothing, and shelter.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
We funded them in the past, but last year, they didn't make an application?
I think it's been more than just one year, I would, I, I would, it wasn't, they didn't receive funds last year, but I think it's been more than a year, has it been just one? It was just, okay, so Paul says it was just one, I thought it was more than that, but
So, but it was just an oversight on our part and not sending them an application?
This year, correct.
Yes, yeah, yeah, this year.
Because they didn't receive funds last year, or the current fiscal year, so when the applications went out to current recipients, they weren't included. So that was just an oversight on our part.
Was it standard operating procedure that if someone hasn't applied in the year before, we don't give them an application?
I mean
All right, just asking a question.
Yeah, go ahead, no, it's fine, go ahead.
If they're consistently funded, and they miss a year, but this group was so new, they'd only been funded one year before.
Okay. Goodbye, hear that? What's that, all right.
I have no idea what he said.
That's all right, I'll reiterate, I'll reiterate what Paul said. So typically, if, if the agency has a strong track record of applying consistently, even if they miss a year, we'll include them. But because Connections of Illinois, two years ago was the first year that they had been funded, and then they dropped off a year.
Oh, okay.
They weren't in the, in the cycle as far as a consistent applicant, an applicant goes.
Is that just a subjective decision, or whether they've had a strong record?
No, it was just an oversight this year.
I know, what if they hadn't, what if they hadn't done it for two years? I mean, when, when do we, when do they set, when do they not set?
We haven't run, we haven't run into that. All we're saying, it was a, it was an oversight because they weren't, it, it wasn't a process Paul was following. It was an oversight because he, it wasn't a well-recognized agency within our organization, and so it didn't pop up, at least us remember, because they had only applied one time before. So it just was an oversight because they had not been a consistent applicant prior. But it wasn't like, it wasn't a process Paul was following, saying, well, if they've applied five years, we send it to them or not, it was just an oversight this year because they're so new.
Okay.
That's a fair enough explanation, Paul?
Yeah.
So, but we got them the application, obviously, we have the application back now.
And how do we, how do we, how do organizations that haven't requested, requested grants, how do they find out about us, what do we, what do we put out for that?
So we've been out, we, we put the notification out in the newspaper, public notice, and also word of mouth from our work with our municipal partners, with our EG Tech partners, with other elected, other elected officials up on our website and our social media, so
In those situations, they have to request an application, we don't send them one?
They can, they can request, a lot of times what will happen is they will request an application in the fall when they're not prepared, the packets aren't prepared to go out, and Paul compiles a list of individuals who have requested a packet, a grant packet, and then once those are all prepared to go out, you know, Paul sends it out to the list that he's, he's accumulated. And we have had, I think in the last several years, an uptick in, in new applicants. Five just last year, yeah. So word is getting out, and we have had new applicants, and so, and even Connections of Illinois is still relatively new to us, so. Any other questions? Very good. Okay, old business, there is nothing under old business, new business. We have item one, Resolution 2021-01. TCF Bank, we, obviously, the, the two senior and disability transportation buses that the Township Board approved purchasing of. We are buying one bus outright, we are financing the second bus. So with TCF, there was a specific language in a resolution that they would like, separate from the resolution that this Board passed last month. So this was, they provided the language, it was reviewed by the attorney, pretty standard language, but there was just specific, specific language they wanted in their, in the resolution for their files. So are there any questions about Resolution 2021-01?
This is a, just an updated one, or a changed one, is what you're saying?
This, this was, this is, this is specific, specifically created for the financing institution, so specifically for our purposes of financing the bus. Okay, can I have a motion to approve Resolution 2021-01?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Keenly?
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Nierdowski, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn?
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney?
Aye.
Hey, motion carries. Okay. Item two, tentative budget for Town Fund, General Assistance in Sewer. Okay, we presented the proposed budget last month, so you had, the Board has had several weeks to have all their questions answered as it relates to the budget. Hopefully, all of your questions were answered. If not, we can talk through them this evening. But I will go and just give the high lines in the different categories and the different departments. If at any point in time you'd like to go deeper into any of these line items, please let me know. But starting out in Town Fund, in the estimated receipts with real estate taxes, personal property replacement, interest, and other miscellaneous receipts, we anticipate revenues totaling $2,451,471. And expenditures in administration, looking at expenses totaling $47,500. Any questions here? Okay, contractual services totaling $407,000. Any questions? Okay. Commodities and miscellaneous totaling $37,500. Questions? Commodities and miscellaneous, I'm sorry, just covered that. Capital outlay, $406,000, which, most of this is a one, one-time expense dealing with the Northside Project. As you can see, the Youth Challenge Course and Bike Safety Course, they're totaling $300,000. Okay, any questions? Okay, payroll expenses in administration, $742,560. Questions? All right, Assessor's Division, total expenses, $232,000. Social Services. Paul, did we not have?
Just don't break down.
The current list, what's that? It's just the total, you just have the total there? Or do you have the itemized?
Your son is attempting to reach you on your cellular device.
Watch out, watch out.
Yeah, there's no breakdowns on the, on the
It's a projected grant?
Yeah, there was, there was a, there was a, there was a breakout.
Yeah, but on the, if you have the worksheets from last month, we just put a total in there of $606,350, they break it down by
Okay. So that was, but that was based on what they, that total amount was based on what they requested?
Yes, yes.
Right.
And I bumped it up a little bit because I didn't know about Connections of Illinois, but they were going to request it.
Okay. Okay, so just to, just to go through, just to refresh everybody's, because everybody from last year came back in, right?
No, I think there were a couple that didn't.
I know I had that list, do you have that list?
Yeah, I did.
If you can go grab it, we'll cover it, we'll go through the rest, because I, I just don't seem to have that list. I forgot to print it, so. All right, so we'll leave that here, and then we'll come back, we'll circle back and go through those requests from the specific social services, service agencies. Okay, so Bike Safety totaling $54,000. Senior Services totaling $219,000. The Adult and Family Counseling and Youth and Family Services totaling $282,000, bringing the total Town Fund expenditures to $342,560. Any questions? Discussion, any proposed changes? We'll circle back with the social service agencies as soon as Paul gets back. But moving on to General Assistance, beginning with total receipts anticipated between primarily real estate taxes totaling $455,714. Contractual Services, $19,500. Administration expenses, $19,200. Employee benefits, $271,100. Home relief, $267,000. And then program expenses, $11,100. For total expenditures, budgeted expenditures of $587,900. Any questions? Okay. All right. Lastly, in this tentative, tentative budget, the last portion is the sewer fund. This is, again, this is not a property tax levying fund. This is paid through service fees for those that use the sanitary sewers. The income, we anticipate, is $101,250. Contractual services of $59,200. Administration expenses of $2300. And then capital expense of $185,000 for total expenditures of $246,500. Any questions? All right, we'll put that on hold right now, we'll move forward with the tentative Road District budget. Okay. Estimated receipts totaling $356,000. Administration fees of $92,000. Salaries anticipated, $19,350. The Road Division, which includes road maintenance, curb and sidewalk repair, et cetera, that total comes to $89,000. And then equipment, anticipated expenditures of six, or budgeted expenditures of $16,250 for total expenditures of $216,600. Any questions of the Road and Bridge tentative budget? All right. Paul's probably making some copies, so can I have, why don't we just, unless there's any objection, we'll move forward on the tentative budget for the Road District. I will entertain a motion to approve the 2021-2022 tentative budget for the Road District.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Ingraffia?
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Saturn. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn?
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney?
Aye. Motion carries on first reading. Thank you. Thank you. Yep, sorry for not printing this, all right, so I just wanted to just circle back, are there any other items outside the social service agencies that any Board member would like to discuss? Okay. All right. Okay, so I'll go down one by one, the agencies that we have funded in the previous year, and those requesting funds again this year. Okay, A Caring Place, Krista's Victor Church, the grant amount from the current fiscal year was $7,500. The grant request for 2021-2022 was $11,250, an increase of $3,750. Access to Care, $33,000 last year, or the current year. Current request is $33,000, so no change. Alexian Brothers Center for Mental Health, doing business as Ameda Health. Grant amount, $15,000 in the current fiscal year, a request for the upcoming fiscal year of $32,000, an increase of $17,000. Catholic Charities of the Archdiocese of Chicago, current year grant $6,000. Grant request of $8,000 for the upcoming fiscal year, increase of $2,000. Center for Enriched Living, $15,000. In the current year, no change in their request for the upcoming year, stays at $15,000. Children's Advocacy, $7,000, grant awarded, current fiscal year, $8,000 request, so a $1,000 difference. Clearbrook Center, current year grant $25,000. $28,000 request, a $3,000 increase. Community Connection Center, $10,000 current grant. No change to their request from this year, $10,000. Community Education Foundation, same, current year, $3,000. The request was the same, $3,000. Escortive Transportation Service, current grant $3,000. $3,500 is the new request, an increase of $500. Faith Community Homes, current grant of $10,000. Increase the request to $10,500, an increase of $500. Fellowship Housing Corporation, $5,000. Current grant, no change in their request, stated $5,000. Gigi's Playhouse, there was no request. They had been funded previously, but there was no request for the last two years. Their request was $2,500. Glenn Kirk did not submit this year. Hands-on, the current grant was $2,500, current request is $5,000, an increase of $2,500. Hopeful Beginnings, AKA St. Mary's Services, current grant of $5,000. No change in the request, $5,000. Journey Care, $2,000 current grant, $3,000 request, increase of $1,000. Journeys the Road Home, $15,000 current grant, request of $20,000, increase of $5,000. Kenneth Young Center, $205,000 current grant, no change, $205,000 requested this year. Lifespan, $20,000 current grant, an increase of $5,000 in their request to $25,000. Little City Foundation, $19,000 current grant, same requested for the upcoming year, $19,000. Lutheran Social Services, Maryville Academy did not submit a grant. Let's see, Northwest Community Hospital Foundation, this is the mobile dental clinic, $40,000. Current grant, no change, and the upcoming requested amount of $40,000. Northwest Compass, $5,000 request, or current grant, $10,000 request, increase of $5,000. Northwest Suburban Daycare, $5,000 current grant, $10,000 request, an increase of $5,000. Resources for Community Living, current grant of $1,250, $1,250, request of $1,500, an increase of $250. Salvation Army, current grant of $5,000, $10,000 request, increase of $5,000. Search Inc. was not awarded last year, they're requesting $5,000. Shelter did not request last year, requesting $70,000. And then Special Leisure Services did not submit this year. And Wings, current grant $1,500, grant request $4,500, an increase of $3,000. And then Illinois Connections, their request was $5,000. So the grant request total, if we add Illinois Connections in there, was $607,750. And I think, let me see. So just, as Paul said, he put in, we put in a placeholder, $615,000 because we did not know what the request was going to be from Illinois Connections. So with that, I will open it up to any discussion about these, the agencies. Just to give you some perspective, as you've seen in the budget, the current year total was $508,250 in total grants. So we're, so it's an increase of right at $100,000.
We had, we had said last year after the agency grants were approved that while we hadn't, we'd failed to done it the year before, we were going to do a, I know we've been busy this year, but we were going to do a scrub of the agencies to see which ones were duplicating each other, which ones were not servicing people in our community that particularly much, and which ones really needed the financial support and others didn't. So I don't, I don't know if we've done that or if we're still just running along with names we've had.
We have been busy this last year with the, with the project, with the building project and getting things up and running here and then working on the Northside project. We're continuing to evaluate. I think the pandemic has changed a lot for a lot of different agencies and we really haven't evaluated to the extent that I would like to see. But we're continuing to evaluate the needs of these different, of our residents based on the services that these agencies provide. And right now, what we're getting from the, the feedback, we're getting from the community and our staff, that we are making good use of the services these agencies provide, especially when it comes to transportation services for mentally and physically disabled residents and, you know, domestic abuse, and you can go down the list. So I think they are getting, these current dollars are going to good use, especially with how well these, these social service agencies run. But we haven't gone to the analysis, the extent of the analysis that it would take to try to understand, I mean, we understand what these agencies do. And duplication, I don't know how much duplication there really is because if you're a, if you're a client at Clearbrook, I don't know if there's any duplication. If you're, you know, for clients at Glenn Kirk, I think they have their own constituency, so to speak, there. But we can continue to evaluate them, that's what I can tell you.
What about, and do we know, let's say Shelter, which has gone from $0 to $75,000 if you combine the two? Or Lexian Brothers for Mental Health, from $15,000 to $32,000? Is there, is there any way really you justify that? Or is there any way, is there some specific reason why they need that huge of a jump?
Well, they just didn't apply last year. You're talking about like Shelter, they just didn't apply last year.
I mean, so they didn't.
It's not like they requested zero and were requesting, they just hadn't, they just didn't apply last year.
So they didn't need the money last year?
Or they just didn't apply. I can't speak to why they didn't apply. I can just tell you that they did not apply last year. And maybe they've seen a greater need this year. Maybe they were in a better position last year and because of whatever circumstances there might be, they are in a position where they need to request the funds this year.
All right, and the last question is, we usually will look at these and have one or, well, they can't come in because of COVID, but usually the board would, would look at these separately and discuss them. You just, in a, in a, in a meeting, in a, in a non-voting meeting, just to look at what was there. We don't have, we don't have the ability to do that this year.
Well, it'd be difficult with the pandemic, but we have, we did have, even well back in March, we, when this was all starting, last March, we did, the new agencies we had come in. So, I'm trying to think. Illinois Connections is the only relatively new one.
From, well, the ones that are under that were new like last year, you mean, or before that?
But, but before, I mean, the ones that didn't request last year that came back, I mean, they're, it's not like they're, they're new to us. They just didn't apply last year. So, I mean, at least the last several years, we've made it a practice to bring in the new agencies and we've had plenty of new agencies apply. So we've had those agencies come in and then standard practice has always been if there's current, currently funded agencies that the board would like to speak to, we can call them in and we can set up a Zoom call, we can absolutely do that. But I leave it up to the board to put in that request to myself or Paul. I'm comfortable, I mean, personally, I'm comfortable with my knowledge in these agencies and the documentation that they provided, that I don't, I personally didn't see a need to call a committee of the whole meeting to discuss the agencies with any of their leadership. But a board member can always do that, we can call a meeting, you know, and at any time. Doesn't even have to just be during budget season, we can always schedule time to have them come in. With that being said, are there any agencies any board member would like to have a discussion with?
Maybe we want to talk to a couple of them that, like Lexian with the big increase or Shelter, that wasn't, didn't request last year.
I just wanted to bring up, there's that several agencies got in late last year and the board said that they weren't going to fund them. So that's why some of those.
Okay. Paul was just reiterating that we, there were some agencies that hadn't met the deadline for the grants and that's why they were, they weren't funded. Some we didn't receive grants for, some they just, their applications weren't timely. So Shelter. Did you say Amita?
Yeah, the mental health.
Any others? Okay, all right, did we want to?
Maybe Connections of Illinois, I don't really remember anything about them.
That was today.
What's that?
That was today.
Right, we got the information on the paperwork.
But just to have a meeting with them.
But it's up to what everybody else wants to do.
Okay, so those three, any others?
I guess just one other point is, we've historically not just granted everything they've requested, in fact, and sometimes we've, I mean. So I mean, I just, is, is the intent of the, I'm just saying, is the intent of the board just to approve what they're requesting this year?
No, and we didn't do that last year.
No, we didn't, no.
No, we, we did not grant the increases for everybody last year. So what I was going to find out from the board, do we want to set up meetings with these three agencies? And determine, have them, you know, have some discussions about why, why they have requested the amounts they have? That way we have a better understanding, excuse me. And go through the other ones now, or put in the placeholder of $607,250? You know, I mean, really, when it comes down to it, if you have, you know, you look at the Illinois Connections, Shelter, Amita, those are obviously the most significant increases. So we can talk through the others, whether we wanted to grant them the increases or not, or put $607,750 as a placeholder to the final budget meeting and then go through the rest of these agencies after we've had a chance to talk to Shelter, Amita, and Connections of Illinois. So with that, whatever the board would like to do, we can go through them now or do that as a placeholder and discuss them all further after we've had the meetings with these three other agencies.
Could we discuss them when we have the meeting with the three agencies? Are we allowed to do that?
Yeah, if we put it on an agenda, sure. We just can't vote on it, but yeah.
We could go through just the ones who asked for increases maybe at that time.
We can do that. So we'll put that on an agenda, so I'll get together with Paul, we'll send out a meeting request, see when everyone's available.
What's the placeholder in $6,000?
So $607,750 will set as the placeholder.
Is it possible that on the, on the grant application, that they would have said that maybe?
What's that?
That, that, you know, on the grant application that they fill out, do you think they might have said why they wanted more in there?
They do, and they did. And, but it's just a matter of us getting a better understanding.
I'm just saying that.
The need in the, the need in the community and trying to have them get more detail on it than just what a grant application might provide. But yes, on their application, they did absolutely provide that detail, what they're going to use the money for and why they need that amount. Okay, so the total amended expenditures for town fund would come to $3,035,310. And then we will schedule a committee of the whole meeting to meet with these three agencies that we've identified and discuss the other agencies further to determine whether or not we want to grant their requests and to what extent we'd like to grant the increases to some of these agencies. Okay, with that change, can I have a motion to approve the 2021-2022 tentative budget for the town fund, general assistance and sewer funds?
Still moved.
Moved by trustee Saturn. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Narodowski. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Okay, no executive session matters to come before the board. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Moved by trustee Saturn.
Second it.
Seconded by trustee Narodowski. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.